Okay, we'll call the meeting of Door County Board of Supervisors, January 27, 2015, to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Everybody go to their pads.
Okay, I'm jinxed this week.
Come on Kenny.
What? I'm on.
You're not doing anything.
What happened here? Where am I at?
Yes, confirm.
There we go.
I got nothing.
Is it making a sound?
Very faint. It's going.
It's, it's.
We might as well go to casino and spend our money because idiots and stock market is chilling right away. Okay, we have fifteen present, six people absent. Motion to present the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mark Brummer, seconded by Tim O'Connor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, to start the meeting now, we're gonna have two presentations. John Colagi, you wanna go forward first? Glenn?
Anyway, John, can you give the presentation?
We're presenting Glenn Merkel, who plucked today in recognition of his over twenty-seven years of service with the county, actually twenty-seven years and a little bit over three months. His last day of work here was January 2nd, and he's, he'll be greatly missed. Glenn has, is one of those Highway Department workers who was very, very reliable. This is an individual who was out at all hours of the night, holidays, servicing the public, taking care of snow and ice control operations largely in the Gardner area. But over his career, not only did he do that, he provided a great service. He was a backhoe operator, a heavy equipment operator, actually was a paper operator for a little while, was an excellent welder until his eyesight went a little bit bad, but that's what happens in that type of a career. But Glenn, on behalf of the citizens of Door County and the County Board, I'd like to thank you for twenty-seven years and three months of service to the county. Thank you very much.
Make a comment?
It was enjoyable working for the Highway Department and everybody in the townships and everything else and throughout the county. And it moved a long ways from when I started with heavy equipment into the modern equipment. And thanks for the boards and everybody else purchasing the equipment that we can do a better job that way. Thank you.
Terry, come on forward. Come on Kathy. Kathy's chairman of law enforcement. Glad Chuck is gone so she can.
She's in charge of vice.
Cheers for Terry.
Terry, I'm just gonna read this way. In recognition of over thirty-eight days of, you take days, years. It was a short, short career, wasn't it? Years of dedicated service to the people of Door County and the Door County Sheriff's Department. This is presented to Terry J. Vogel, given this twenty-seventh day of January 2015, County Board of Supervisors. There you go.
Just a quick thank you to everybody. It's been quite a ride for me throughout the time here, and I wanted to thank the County Board especially. I think that's probably one of the main reasons I came here. I don't think people realize what a job that you guys are tasked to do and what an outstanding job that you guys do at times, but you've really been a great employee for me. There was times I couldn't believe they were paying me what they were paying me to do what I did. Thank you very much, and I just appreciate so much being part of the County of Door. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the agenda under correspondence, there's a letter telling us what the unsigned fund balance is. Has anybody got any questions? If not, there's a letter from Scott DeRina we sent everybody, and of course it was turned over to the ad hoc EMS study committee to look through and come back with some comments, and they've already done some comments on them already. If anybody's got any questions, Susan is the chairman of that committee, and that's the committee that will address those situations that were in the letter.
I will refer it to Mr. Williams.
Dan is sitting back there. If you have any questions about the letter, really Dan Williams, right Susan? Talk to Dan Williams about it, and he'll explain the situations, the pros and cons to it. Is there any public comment?
The only other, can I say one thing though? It's good to have questions to go to this committee, so I'm supposed to do this, so I'm on the tape, Laddie tells me. But if you do have questions that you feel need to be answered by this committee before we move ahead, that's good. Please pass them on, or if you have constituents that are asking you questions, pass them on. We need to have them answered before we decide anything, so.
Okay. Ken?
I did have a question. As I read through it, there were some comments that were made here, and I don't have it right in front of me, but one was about, he was accused by one of the members of being a Tea Party member, not that that should be bad, I mean, that's like saying, I accuse you of being a Baptist, or whatever. It's, it doesn't mean anything, but somebody thought it was negative. Was he mistreated at the meeting when he got there to express his point of view?
Who's this though? No, he never, he never appeared before the meeting, and the letter was sent to me personally with a copy sent to Susan and Dick Haynes.
Where did those comments come from that he talked about?
You'd have to talk to him, and I passed the letter on to the committee, and I thought that if the committee is made up of a number of county board members, then if they're gonna know what's in the letter, then the rest of the county board should know, like yourself, that's not on the committee, and that's, he never appeared before anybody.
Okay.
He did talk to some of us on the phone.
I would hope that all the-
But you have to take the letter for what it's, what's in it and-
I would hope all the concerns he brings up-
Well, you'd have to talk to Dan Williams or Scott DeRina and see what their concerns are, but for me not to, and I think, are you coming forward to respond to some of this, Dan? And for me to not give you guys the letter, it's better that the letter is out in the open, so.
Yep. And I don't mean to make a big thing of it, I just, when I read those comments he made, it was like he had been to a meeting and was mistreated by some of the members, you know?
Okay.
And that should never happen to any-
Okay, he would, no.
Anybody that comes before us.
No, he wouldn't.
Okay.
Go ahead Susan.
Dan has given me, Danny has given me a fact sheet to pass around, because one of the things our committee is doing is, as questions are brought forward, there will be a public fact sheet. It will be on our website. A presentation that Dan did yesterday at the meeting will be on the website as well, I think in the quick links, but even if not in the quick links, it'll be in the EMS departments thing, so that you can stay abreast of what we discovered. But I will be happy to-
Okay, go ahead. Dan, you wanna say anything or no, or not, or?
I would basically, I just wanted to make sure that everybody did get a fact sheet because we addressed many of the things that were in that letter, as well as other things that we've heard throughout the community, and I think it's been all vetted by the committee. They reviewed it and understand what it all is and agreed with the information that was provided, so I think that's probably the best way to keep addressing things, and as the, after each committee meeting, we'll update the sheet and we'll put a mark on it where it must have been the last time it was updated, so that you always know what's at the front version of it. Hopefully that'll provide enough information to clear the air a little bit on some of those stuff.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment, does anybody in the public gonna make a comment? I didn't hear anybody come forward before, but if not, we'll move to the administrative report. You wanna comment on our process of recruiting the county minister, where we're at?
Sure. Aside from what Dan asked me to comment on, and I guess it's a good segue to my comment, is generally I can, I will plan to treat this as a question and answer session rather than me prattle on endlessly about things that might be going on. I think each of you have sufficient, or probably more than enough opportunity to see me now that I have my dual role. In terms of the recruitment, selection, and retention of the county administrator's position, we've had several meetings, some of them involving select supervisors and staff and an outside consultant, namely Charlie Carlson, and also a special meeting of the administrative committee yesterday. And preliminary determinations are that we will move forward, obviously, with recruitment. That recruitment will be more of a national scope, focused nationally in a scope. We are inclined to accept the recommendations made by Mr. Carlson as to how to go about recruiting the new county administrator. And that involves in synopsis having two separate groups of individuals that will be part of the selection process. The first group, obviously, will be elected supervisors with perhaps some people with expertise in the community, expertise in the evaluation and selection of executives and administrators generally. Second, there will be a group that will be made up of department heads and both appointed and elected department heads. That group will number around seven and will be a group that I will select, and by select, I mean at this point I'm gonna request volunteers, evaluate people that have indicated a willingness to volunteer, and select those folks to participate in this process. I think I've, I'm quoting from memory that I've characterized or called this group the Stakeholders Advisory Panel. What needs to be remembered is that the selection ultimately of the county administrator is left to the elected county board supervisors. The stakeholders' group's involvement is purely advisory. The reason for that are twofold primarily. One, it's better to get a second set of eyes on the applications, the applicants, the interview process, basically the selection process that have one set of eyes. And two, to get buy-in from the department heads, whether they be appointed or elected, because they are the individuals who'll be working with the county administrator, if not on a day-to-day basis, certainly in a week-to-week, month-to-month basis, and will need to develop a relationship with the county administrator that's positive, and in essence have some skin in the game with respect to selection. The way the process is going to move forward from here is that the administrative committee is going to make some final determinations at its February meeting and bring those forward as recommendations to the county board at the county board February meeting, and we will have an outline of the recruitment and selection process for the county board to say yea or nay to. Let me know if I've missed anything.
Carlson's coming to the county board.
Right. Charlie Carlson from Detman, Carlson or Carlson, Detman Consulting Firm will be present at the county board meeting in February, and will be making a presentation to the county board that outlines his recommendations, and also will be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, the other thing we did is we put on hold the evaluation of the new administrator, and we're gonna cover that after we figure out what we're gonna hire the person.
Correct. Yeah, that part was put on hold. It will certainly be accomplished concurrent with the new administrator being placed on board, but we see that as a process that parallels the recruitment and selection process, the process of deciding how and when the person will be evaluated, once they are appointed as county administrator. There's more to it than that, but you'll get the full monty, so to speak, at the February meeting.
Okay. Anything else as far as administrator?
Nope, that's it. Any questions?
If not, we'll move on to the minutes of December 16, 2014, Public Attorney Reg. Meeting, someone make a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Biz Verley, motion is seconded by Dick Haynes. Are there any questions, additions, or subtractions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. We have pending business right here. There's a letter to you that we said that would be coming from the last county board. We formed an ad hoc committee for the EMS study. The members of the committee are Susan Quod is the chairman, Kathy Schultz, Dave Lino, John Cook, Randy Alstead, Tim Hurlash, Doug Wymer, and then John Hurlash and Chris Heck are some expert advisors. They've already had two meetings, and what we said at the last county board meeting, we report to you who's gonna be on the committee and what they're gonna try to evaluate, and if you have any questions, talk to Dan Williams or Susan so they can put on the agenda, and they promised us that they're gonna be done in two to three months. Is that correct, Susan? Or tried to at least?
Yeah.
And tried to be done very quickly. Are there any questions on that? If not, we'll go to the resolutions. First resolution. Kenny, you wanna explain it?
Well, certainly. These are two items that were brought forward by a mister, let me see if I can find it on here, I don't know if I have his name right here. Anyway, by a concerned citizen, we'll call, I believe the gentleman is in the back right now anyway, that Pile Creek had been misspelt, and we discussed that, and so we're looking to correct the spelling. It's line thirteen, change the official name from pile, P.I.E.L., to pile, P.E.I.L. All right? That's one change. The other one was, let's see.
Rebold.
Was Rebold Creek, again, yeah. Line nineteen. It has been called Rebold or Rebold Creek, and we're gonna change it to, Rebold Creek is correct, to R.I.E.B.O.L.D.T. Make that the official name of that creek.
Would you make a motion to-
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-01.
Is there a second? Second by Randy. Is there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Now we'll go to the purchase of the Hot Mix paper. John?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution before us.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
You looking for an explanation?
Yes.
The money you're seeing in front of you is not new money. This money is, I'll call it old money, it's in the budget, it's in the highway budget, it's already been there. We're not asking for anything new, but the state statutes require that we come before this board with this amount, and the same thing applies to Resolution 215-04. So, oh, three, I mean, so it's just, it's just a formality that we have to go through. The money is there, it's not new money. If you want any more nuts and bolts on issue, I believe Mr. Colagi's in the back room to give them to us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I, quick, just, I don't know if he stuck along or if he left, but the prior one, 2015-01, that was brought forward by Mr. Philip Greppner. Is he still here? Or did he leave? No, I was told he was here. But anyway, if I had brought this forward, I guess I would want my name mentioned, so I'm mentioning his name.
Thank you. Okay. Granted, the next number of resolutions, you wanna explain the two-thirds so everybody understands that? All, take two-thirds vote, don't they?
Not on the next two resolutions, as John explained, this was money that was actually put in the budget, and by virtue of a long ago prior resolution, the statutes, they're required to come forward to county board to approve the actual expenditure of those funds. That can be done by majority vote or a form.
Okay, we'll explain after we get done with those two. Okay. Is there any questions on the, on the paper? If not, John, you wanna say anything or not, or? Okay. Go to the voter board and, oh, yeah, we're gonna have a practice here. Okay, go to voter board and vote it up or vote it down. Need a majority of eleven, right? We have it passed by a board of fifteen yes. Nobody against it, five absent. Next item is the truck chassis, John, you wanna make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution before us.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
It's basically the same as the previous resolution, so I don't know if you want me to go into the speech again or not.
Does anybody have any questions? We'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no on whether to approve this or not. That has passed on a vote of fifteen yes and six absent. Next item is the transfer of funds, non-budgeted funds for capital improvements for county roads and bridges. David, you wanna make the motion and start it rolling and-
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll have an explanation, John, after you make the motion.
Okay. Make the motion that we approve Resolution 2015-04, Capital Improvement Fund to County Roads and Bridges Fund, Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds for the Highway Department.
Second by Kathy. You wanna explain, Grant?
Yeah, very briefly, the next six resolutions involve the transfer of non-budgeted funds. Section sixty-five point ninety of the statute requires in that situation a two-thirds vote of the total membership, which means that there has to be fourteen yes votes for the resolution to be adopted.
And, go ahead Biz.
Well, I don't know if they add any further, I just, in looking at this resolution submitted by the finance committee, and I think you have a misprint there, you have Will Jean Courts included on this? He's a past county board member and he's passed away.
He's way on the bottom.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
So.
Good eye.
Yeah, it isn't gonna make any difference probably to the resolution, it's just that that should be taken off of there because it, I don't know how it got on there, but there's some kind of a misprint.
Blame to county clerk.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you Biz.
So basically what this resolution is about is, there are funds that we're under in some line items of the Highway Department, and there's some funds that we are over, and commissioner is asking, Highway Committee is asking that we transfer funds between funds to make up the shortfall.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
And I'm sure Mr. Colagi could explain further if we need to.
Anybody got any questions? We'll go to the voter board, on all these, we're gonna go to the voter board and it's, you know, the vote's gotta be at least fourteen, or cross that bridge if it doesn't. Okay, that has passed on a vote of fifteen yes and six absent. Next item, David, you might just go make a motion and keep going.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Resolution 2015-05, Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds for Door County Building and Grounds Justice Center Boiler Repair.
Second by Kathy.
As you can see in the resolution, we had a boiler that needed to be, a heat exchanger that needed to be repaired at the Justice Center, and the cost of that is thirty-five thousand dollars, and so the property committee has asked finance to transfer funds so they can do the repair. And if we need further explanation, Wayne is available in the back.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board. Okay. Go to the voter board. That has passed on fifteen yes with six absent. Door County Fair, David?
The vice chair, Supervisor Schultz, will handle that one.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ken.
This was something that was brought to the finance committee by the Airport and Park Committee and the Administrative Committee to transfer fifteen thousand dollars to supplement the county fair budget for 2015.
Okay.
And if there's any questions, I think Mark Jennyak is back there.
Somebody wanna ask any questions? Go ahead, Ken.
Just a comment on this, it went through the channels, it went through the fair board, to the airport and parks, we took it to admin and then to finance, it just, it just worked out that way instead of going right to finance. But what we're really asking for is to change the donation that, we appreciate the fifteen thousand, but it's kind of worded that it's a one-time deal. What we were asking for and thought we made it clear, that this was going to be an ongoing, we're gonna up the donation to the fair of, by fifteen thousand each, not that we make fifteen, thirty, forty, it's not that. The amount we give to the fair every year to help support them, we wanna increase that fifteen thousand from here on, because they have been running fifteen thousand dollars in the red roughly, and we wanna stem that.
And that's a decision that the next budget people will make?
Yes.
This is just for this year period?
But I wanna, I understand and appreciate all of it, but just, and I will add something. Biz and I went to the last fair board meeting, and I'll tell you what, as much I hate to admit, you're correct, you are right. Once you pay attention to what the others do, you really get an education. And I'll tell you what, what those individuals do to keep the fair going and what they take on is impressive.
Correct.
I came away from that meeting dazzled by the work they do and the initiative that they have to keep it going, and without giving anybody a swallad head, because I know some of them are back there, they really do a great job. Without them, I don't know that that fair would continue.
You're correct. Anybody have any questions? If, Biz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so the board knows that most of this fifteen thousand dollars that's on the table right now to approve is the money that would cover the security at the fair, and the three-year average for the security, that's the reserves out there and full-time people to keep the law and order out there, the three-year average for that alone was five thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. In addition, the Highway Department does work out there when there's events in the grandstand, and the three-year average for the Highway Department was two thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. And the other thing, which is a kind of another big number, is the utilities. The utilities really spikes up out at the fairgrounds because the carnival part, they have an eighteen-wheeler and a generator and supply all the power for the rides and stuff. But the games in the midway and the food stands in the midway are hooked on to our electricity. And the three-year average for the utilities out there is five thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. So most of this fifteen thousand dollars is just- So, most of this $15,000 is just things that are happening at the fair that the county, different departments provide and the utilities. And, you know, that's why in the last several years, they've been operating in the red and they're asking, you know, to have this money budgeted to cover these expenses. So, they also said that they have reserve money, but that's been depleted over the last several years. And if we would have one bad year, for instance, a couple nights of rain during the fair, they'd be broke. So, that, you know, that's why we brought this thing forward and really, it's taxpayer money, any way you want to look at it, to operate the fair. And I think the fair is very, very important, especially the junior fair part with the exhibits and the animals. And, you know, I'm hoping that the board doesn't have any problem and they pass this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed fifteen yes, six absent. Next item is fiber optic. David?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2015-07 Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds for the Door County Fiber Optic Network Project.
I'll second this one.
Okay. You want to mention the amount?
As we're all aware, we approved this back in November and sent it to Finance to work out how it could be funded. Finance at its regular meetings determined that we did not want to borrow. Instead, we were going to take funds from the unassigned fund balance for this year. The total project cost is about $2.57 million, I'm sorry, $2.5 million, spread over three years. This year for 2015, the dollar amount is 1.248 for the CIP. And by taking this from the unassigned fund balance, this particular project, in addition to some of the other non-budgeted fund transfers, will take the unassigned fund balance down to about 14%. Typically, we're in the slightly over the 15 range. It will temporarily take it down to the 14. And I would also mention, this is unaudited fund balance. Our 2014 fund balance will not be zero, will not be audited until sometime in June. So, these are projected numbers that we're currently at the 14%.
Okay. Is there any questions? John?
Well, the question I have here is, as fast as technology moves nowadays, is this going to be outdated before we get it paid for?
Mark Reller?
Fiber optics probably going to be around for, foreseeably, at least 50 more years of viable technology. It's fairly new already, so, I mean, it's been out there for a while, but it's only been used in this capacity fairly recently in a large scale. So, no, we're not going to be, not like some things where they're obsolete before you get them paid for. This will not be.
This has got a fairly long...
Go ahead, John.
I can appreciate that, but I'm sure that a couple of years ago, they told us that we would forever have landline telephones.
That was Graham Bell.
Unfortunately, they can't move the amount of data they want through the air. The technology's not there.
Yes.
And it's also not secure when it's in the air, so this also takes care of that problem.
David?
And just to add to Mark's statement, all the cell phone companies and everybody else, they're running fiber all over the place right now.
Talk to, talk to your mic, Dave. So, there's on the tape. We got to have that on tape.
Okay. Just to add to that, most cell phone companies and communications companies are currently running their fiber optic systems at the same time, so they're expecting it to live for 25, 30, 50 years.
John, I can also tell you, I recently toured the Selcom Insight Facility down in Green Bay, where they are now, they are just now starting to hook up their own fiber network. They are projecting a 25- to 30-year lifespan on half of the, half of the cable bundles within the fiber that they're running. So, they expect up to a 50- to 75-year life expectancy if they use the entire fiber network.
Apparently, John, it's going to outlive us. You and I, anyway. Biz?
No, just a comment. When you look at, you know, when you transfer 80,000, you transfer 15,000, and the next one, you're going to transfer, you know, a small, you know, 50, 60,000. But when you're going to transfer, you know, a million, 2,048 out of your undesignated fund, and I'm sure the chairman is going to agree with me, this is alarming. We're, first of all, we're very fortunate to have this much cushion, because I think most of us on the county board are not really big on borrowing money. And we're fortunate that we have these large, you know, this amount is a lot, and it really raises eyebrows when you're going to transfer that much out of your fund. I'm not against it, I think it's very important, but Mr. Ninus is right. The way we're moving with technology in the world, you really wonder, involved with the radio system, with the sheriff department, as fast as we put stuff in, we were told it's only good for about three years and it's all going to change again. And I have a concern too that, that by the time this is in place, all the way they invent stuff and things come up, but yet, you got to stay up with doing the, doing the right thing. But I think, I think the chairman did say at one meeting that we can't just keep transferring money out of the undesignated fund because we're getting, you know, down to what they're projected is 14%. And we got to stay by rule above, what, 12%? And it's just my comment, this is a big number for transferring.
Exactly. And this is the first time that I can remember in a number of years gone past that we dipped below the 15%, but we have to be careful to watch it now. We're close.
Right.
Ken?
I have my concerns on this also, Mr. Chairman. I'm not against the project, and as much as I always lobbied against borrowing, I got to tell you, I would rather borrow the money now. Did they look into, and I'm sure they did, what interest rate you'd be talking at? I mean, you can borrow money for almost nothing now. It's not like we're looking at a 12% interest rate.
I think what they looked at can even be like four or five percent to borrow, and right now, the money that we have in the undesignated balance is getting less than 1%.
I understand. I understand that. But, but that's got to be balanced with the fact that once that money's gone from that undesignated fund, it's gone.
Yes.
It's gone. It could put you in a real bind later on, and we are looking at projects coming down the line.
Exactly. And that's where...
I got to tell you, I would rather this, just for me, this is one instance where I would say no to this, but yes if they want to borrow the money.
Correct. Did anybody look into that? David's going to respond to that. He's chairman of Finance, by the way. Let him respond to that.
He did it in November.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Even though he's been skiing for the last couple of weeks.
We did, of course, look into the borrowing. Shirley at Finance went out and looked at what the various rates were and what the options were. There is, quote, cheap money out there based on the current rates. But in November, we were given the direction by the board not to borrow, and so we went back to Finance and looked at how we could accomplish it. I guess I would also point out that there, we have a number of other reserve items that we've taken from the unassigned fund balance and put into line items that could be moved around, whether it was for this project or for future projects that we're talking about. I mean, we have several million dollars out there that we've taken from the unassigned fund balance and putting in other line items that are just sitting out there too. So, it's not as though there's not a way to fund this without borrowing.
I think to answer your question, Ken, everybody's concerned, but the real discussion will come when we get to the, if we do get to it, the Senior Citizens Center and the EMS buildings. And that's when that discussion will really take hold. But right at this moment, we're okay.
But if we, if we take the money off the top now, we're putting our backs possibly against the wall later on, where we might not necessarily be putting our backs against the wall later on if we borrow now for this. And this is legal to borrow for.
Yes.
You know, I...
I don't know that there's, given the scope of the projects that we're talking about, they're not all going to be able to take and be taken from the unassigned fund balance. There's going to come to a point in time where the board is going to have to make the decision to borrow or not to borrow and/or complete some projects.
Correct. That's what I'm talking about. I don't want to put our back against the wall all, you know...
And David and I had this conversation yesterday. The unassigned fund balance has not received the results of the 2014 budget yet, so it might pop back up above 15% after the...
Down also.
It could. It could, very well. But that will, but don't forget the low end of it is 12%. So, Susan?
With the second and third year of this project, it's possible that Finance and the board will decide that those should be borrowed.
Correct.
That's a possibility. So, each year is taken on...
Correct. Any other questions? We discussed this one, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but you know that that was my main goal here.
I know.
To have a discussion.
John has been complaining that we haven't discussed things openly more on the county board level rather than just at committees. Am I correct, John?
That is true.
Right. So, any other questions? If not, go to the voter board and vote yes or no. Oh, wait.
Wait.
We can go now. Ken's going to be arguing. That has passed 14 yes, one no, and six absent. Still got the two-thirds. Next item is the Human Services Department. Go ahead, David.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-08 Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds to Door County Human Services Department. As contained in the resolution, we're transferring interdepartmental funds between line items. It's known, it's not new funding that we're asking for, and we're not taking it from any other source. And I'm sure that Human Services Director would be happy to explain if we need any further explanation.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Kathy. Is there any questions? Anybody got any questions? Yep, are you ready? That's what I'm waiting for. Ready? Okay, go ahead and vote the, voted yes or no. That has passed 15 yes and six absent. Next item is Family Care Human Services, ADRC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 2015-09 Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds to Door County Family Care Human Services, ADRC. And I would ask Joe or somebody from ADRC to explain this.
Okay, Joe, you want to?
I'll second it.
Mark second it.
Mark Miller second it.
Good morning. We are transitioning to family care in August of 2015. That transition requires some work that historically has been done by our long-term care staff in other counties. Because of some changes that the state made, that work has to be done by our ADRC staff, and we are not currently staffed at a level that we can accomplish the work to make that transition happen smoothly for our consumers. The money that we're asking for will cover two limited-term employees to come in and help us with enrollment counseling, which is the new added workload that we'll have to do between March and August, the end of August, actually, September 1st. So, that's what the money is for. It'll cover two LTEs and two computers so that they can access their work and document it.
Okay, is there any questions? Ken? I can't see your hands sometimes because it's behind Randy's.
This is for family care.
This is for the transition to family care.
Is this going to go away when family care is operational?
Yes, once, by September 1st, these positions will be eliminated, or they're, again, limited term, September 1st, we will no longer need them.
Okay, because if I remember the conversations correctly, we were asked to staff your situation with the thought that when family care comes in, things will get easier and we will not have to do as much as we did before.
That's correct.
Because family care will pick the slack on. I was just concerned that now, here's the first thing for family care, we're in, and we're asked to get some LTEs, so...
I understand your concern. And the truth is that I'm hoping to come back next month or the month after to talk about the transition in family care and what that will mean, but it'll actually mean overall less staff than we currently have. But this transition, we will need additional help.
Less staff or just easing up on the overloaded demands of your current staff?
Well, if you want to look at it that way, I'd be glad to come back and ask for as many staff, but no, I'll be more specific about that.
All right, real good. Thank you.
You bet.
Are there any other questions? Go to your voter board and yes or no. That has passed on 15 yes and six absent. Next item is the appointment of committees and commissions and boards. Grant and myself have come upon these appointments. Most of them are to accommodate Ben Meyer, who is student teaching at this time and wanted to remain an active member in the county board, so he went around and made some trades with a number of people that they all agreed that they would switch committees to help him out so he could meet some of these committees at, after he's done teaching in the afternoon, and everybody has agreed to it. So, I'd like a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second by Dick Haines? Has anybody got any, there are some appointments by Grant in this also. Go ahead, David.
Just want to make sure that we clear up the finance issue.
Yeah, there's one typo.
Right.
Actually, Susan is replacing Joel Gunlickson on finance rather than Ben Meyer. That's just a typo. You want to make any comments on your appointments or not, or?
No, above and beyond, the appointments that are, belong to the county administrator set forth in Exhibit A, and those that belong to the county board chairman are in Exhibit B. The appointments that are not related to Supervisor Meyer's schedule involve the Board of Adjustment. What we're, what I'm suggesting is that Brian Force be appointed as the first alternate new appointee, filling the unexpired term of Joanne Schlei. And with the Comprehensive Community Services Coordinating Committee, there are two new appointments replacing existing members. If there's any questions, I can try to answer those.
If not, all in favor, say aye. That has passed. Amendment to Unified Addressing System Manual. Ken Fisher, Chair of that committee, would you like to make a motion and then explain it?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and hope somebody in the back is there to explain it.
Is there a second? Second by Susan. Go ahead, Brian.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, oh, I guess I did. I'll make that motion.
This isn't actually changing anything as far as how we implement the Uniform Addressing Ordinance and Manual. It's just cleanup. There were some outdated things in here as far as where the ordinance is actually in place and what we're doing for the municipalities, and just some language cleanup, so it's not actually changing any regulations, it's just making everything correct and current.
Has anybody got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's passed. Human Services Resource Center, there's a resolution by the property committee, but it was also a resolution in conjunction with the Human Services Committee. Someone like to make a motion to get it on the floor, we're going to have some discussion on this, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to approve it, Mr. Chairman, but...
Seconded by Dave, okay, go ahead.
With some changes here.
Okay, go ahead.
I read through this, and it seemed, I guess the word I'm looking at is very finite. It was like a final resolution to give the okay to build it. Line sixteen through eighteen, for instance, says, resolve that, that construction of a human service center at the site of current senior center, da-da-da, address, is hereby authorized. I take exception to that. That, that kind of writes it down that no matter what we do from here on out, we're authorizing the building of it, we're going to go ahead, no matter what happens, no matter what the price is or, or anything. I would like to strike that, because we're, I'm okay with spending the money they request to look into it. That, that's okay. I just didn't like the finality of that statement at this point in time. I think it's too early for that.
Okay.
And on line one, go up there, it says, "The County of Door has contemplated and planned for..." We're in the process of contemplating and planning for. Again, that's, that's more of a finite statement, "We're in the process of." And then down to, I think, is it...
So be, I know you're going to make an amendment here. Be specific of what you want in your amendment.
Well, I'd like line sixteen through eighteen struck.
Okay.
Just off the table. I'd like line one to read, "The County of Door is contemplating and planning for." All right? That, that says, "We're in the process of."
Okay, that's fine.
And, that's okay. Yeah, I think that would, that would do it.
Okay, I'll second that.
That, that just...
Okay.
You know.
So there's an amendment to the, to the resolution to change has to is on the first line and make planning instead of plan, and to strike sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Go ahead, Susan.
Question? Do we need in there somewhere that the site we're contemplating and planning for is the current?
It is.
Do we need that in there?
That's, that's there.
Line four and five.
Oh, yeah, okay, gotcha. Yep, you're right.
David?
I guess I just want to clarify Mr. Fisher's amendment. And you can correct me if I'm wrong?
Certainly.
So as I understand your amendment, what you're looking for is to complete Phase One and Phase Two, as listed here on, on the resolution, and authorize to proceed with the $150,000 study money? And that will get us through Phase One and Phase Two, at which point in time it will come back to the County Board for potential authorization to proceed and then funding after that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any? Is there any other questions on, this is on the amendment now, and we're going to take a roll call on the amendment, just so everybody's clear. Just wait one second. Okay, this, roll call on the amendment that we just did on line one, is instead of has and planning instead of plan, to strike sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And contemplating instead of contemplated. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question.
Go ahead, John.
Is that $150,000, is that new money, or is that coming out of the $600,000 that was put away?
Coming out of the $600,000 that's already allocated. And they don't plan on using, at this time, any...
Up to?
Up to, they're just not going to plant at least. Go ahead, Susan.
I just want to ask Grant, we're okay with this new language? Doesn't it really what we're doing, right?
Ken, Ken and David brought it to my attention yesterday, looked at it, and it absolutely makes no difference in the, and in fact, probably more accurately reflects the intention of the resolution, so.
It was brought to my attention, too. All in favor, go to, okay, wait a second. Are you ready? This is just the amendment, great. Okay? This is for the amendment, yes or no? Simple majority is needed, correct?
Correct.
That has passed, fifteen yes and six absent. Now we'll go to the resolution as amended. Is there any questions on it? Ready? Okay, go to the voter board and vote yes on the resolution. That has passed on fifteen yes and six absent. Next item is an option to purchase the Old Cherry School. I'll have Grant explain it. It went to the Property Committee, the Property Committee resolved to decline it. Somebody want to make a motion, get it on the floor, and then Grant will explain it?
I'll move.
Second, motion by John, seconded by John Cook, I mean, he made the motion, John burst, seconded. Go ahead, Grant, you want to explain?
Back in 1985, Door County sold what I'm going to call the Cherry School property to the current owners. As a condition of that sale, Door County retained an option to purchase. The option to purchase is defined as the option price of $38,000 plus the cost of improvements made upon the property, which cost shall exclude the cost of drilling any well that is drilled. We received notice on December 19th that Door County Child Care Services, Inc., intended to sell the property. From December 19th, we have 60 days to either act and exercise that option, or decide that we're not going to exercise the option. One of the questions that came up was whether there is in fact any value to improvements to the property since 1985, or is the option price simply $38,000? I did have an opportunity to speak with Sarah Lankie, who is the representative of Door County Child Services, Inc., late last week, I believe, and she indicated that it's their view, the option price is $38,000. And the resolution is here today so that we can allow the Door County Child Care Services, Inc., to move forward with their sale of the property, or if we exercise the option, that we exercise the option of purchase of property for $38,000. As Dan indicated, the recommendation of the Property Committee is to not exercise the option and provide notice to Door County Child Care Services, Inc., of that decision.
David?
Do we know what the fair market value is currently?
No, we don't, because Door County Child Care Services, Inc., is a nonprofit, so the property is not taxed and carries no current assessment.
I, I don't think there's any question with, just looking at the building, David, it's 1.9 acres, that the fair market value is, exceeds $38,000. I can just, just, I think it's common sense to tell you that, but the consensus of the Property Committee... Dick Haynes, you want to respond to that, since you're on the Property Committee and you were in...
I was just, I was just going to do that, because since, since we had the property meeting, and I didn't think it would be such a good idea for the county to get involved in that, because of the fact that you might have to take care of it and do it, I've changed my mind, and think it probably would be in good interest for the county to maybe own that. For what we do with it, I don't know. I'm sure there'd be some maintenance that probably would have to happen, but I guess why wouldn't we exercise that option, you know? But I did change my mind since the meeting, and at the meeting, I didn't think, what, what do we want to get into that for? You know, we're going to have issues, it's not like, like the county shop where you have the contamination and that kind of thing, so...
What, what is the childcare center, what is their purpose, or are they going someplace else?
They want to do business.
They're going out of business.
They're out of business, yeah.
Going out of business. Okay, so there's no harm to them if the county were to acquire the property and turn around and sell it or something?
Yeah, what we do with it, I don't know, you know, but you could always resell it at some time, you know, if a person wanted to, or store some things there, or whatever, and, you know, it's not like it's, it's not like it's $300,000, you know, so... So anyway, I changed my mind since that Property Committee meeting, thinking it might be worthwhile.
The biggest problem, and that came up at the meeting, that it might be a good idea, because it does sound like a fantastic buy, but there's a time limit that we have to the middle of...
It's middle of February, I think.
Middle of February, and...
So it's pretty quick.
It's pretty quick, and, you know, it's safe, for instance, the recommendation got turned on, and it would have to be decided, it's going to take a couple of special meetings to figure out where you're going to get the money from, because there's no budgeted, it's going to take two-thirds.
Since it's on the agenda today, can't we figure that out as a board to do that right now?
And actually, what we're required to do under the option is to give the current owner notice within 60 days that we intend to exercise our option, then within 30 days of the date we give the owner notice that we intend to exercise the option, we're obligated to close. So if we time it correctly, we can probably get ourselves to the middle of March with, in terms of having to actually come up with a source for the funds, and if the County Board decided to not go along with the recommendation, the Property Committee, and exercise the option, then what I would anticipate is it would be referred to the Finance Committee to come up with a source for those funds, and then it would come back to the County Board in February to approve the transfer of funds, because it would require two-thirds vote, because it's non-budgeted. But that can all be done within the timeframe within which the county has to exercise the option and then close on the property. The direction I would need from you today, if we're going to exercise the option, is to do so, and then we would provide that notice to the owner within 60 days of December 19th, which is roughly February 19th.
Let me ask you this, could we, since it came up so suddenly, and nobody had a chance to really think it through over a number of days, like Dick has changed his mind, could we basically postpone this and get all those answers between now and the February County Board meeting, and make a more educated decision on it than we probably would today?
No, because that would be outside of the 60 days.
Let's give it a try. Go ahead, Biz.
Well, the, the main reason it's here is because we, when we sold it, we had right of first refusal, so they had to give us this opportunity to, to buy it at what we're thinking is lower than market value price. But I don't think it's a, a function of the County Board to flip property to make money. That, that's not one of our functions. Even though it, it might be an idea to buy it, and if the roof is leaking, you may do some repairs and then sell it to make a profit, I, I don't think that's our role. So I, you know, I, at this point, I can't support it. We don't have a good use for it. We've got that huge highway shop, if we, if we want places to store stuff, we can exercise our rights there and, and stop renting it, and we have all kinds of room. And to find the money to buy this, after we just transferred, I don't, I don't know how much money, more than a million and a half this morning, I, I just, I, I don't think we should be flipping property to, to try to make a, you know, a few thousand-dollar profit, it's just, I don't think it's our role to do that.
I, to correct you though, Biz, one, one thing you said, they did not have to give us an option to buy. Why they did, I have no clue.
I thought we had right of first refusal.
Yeah, but they did not have to give that when they sold it.
In fact, it's actually, there's a difference between an option to purchase at a defined price, is what the county got, versus a right to first refusal. A right to first refusal would mean that the owner advertises a property for sale, somebody makes a bona fide offer, then they would have to approach the county and say, "We have an offer for this property for X number of dollars, you have the right to match that and buy it." What we have is actually, if I can use the word better than that, we have an option to purchase at a defined price, $38,000, so. And they're required to give us notice of their intent to place the property on the market for sale, and allow us the 60 days to exercise the option before they advertise it for sale, and that's what they've done here, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, but the Property Committee did not go through the building and see evidence of issues, and, you know, it's an old, old building, I, I know that, you know, they drilled a well, that evidence is in our packet, Harvey Johns was there in April 9th of 1985 and drilled a well, 240 feet deep, to the tune of $5,112. And, and, you know, I, I wouldn't dispute that maybe it's a good price for that property in the town of Sebastopol, but I, I just can't see where the, the county has a use for it, and to, to purchase it and to flip it, to make money is, I, I don't think that's our role to do it.
Ken?
Are we within our rights to do this, Grant?
Yeah, we, we are within our rights to exercise the option, and I would strongly suggest that if you were inclined to do that, that we make an effort to inspect the property. We don't have any right to under the option, but if the County Board decides it wants to exercise this option, we could certainly ask the current owner if they would allow us to hire somebody to go through and see if there's any obvious issues in terms of something like a, an environmental site assessment, but they may say no.
That's okay. I'm with Dick on this one. I think, I think it's a, I think it's money well, well spent. I think we should pursue it.
Go ahead, Dick.
I, I think what I did say at the Property Committee meeting, just to clarify it too, is that I didn't think the county should really get into this thing of flipping it, you know, so, just so you don't think that's what I'm thinking. You know, I'm just thinking it would be probably a, you know, make a park there or something, I don't know.
But we did own the property before, didn't we? That's why, we did own the property before, right?
There's probably a reason that back in 85, that somebody wanted to buy that property that was on the County Board, you know, that, but, anyway, but that's not my intention either, to get into a situation of flipping properties, you know? That's not our business, but, anyway.
Yeah, I, I understand what Dick's saying.
Finance Committee for signing that agreement in 86, but I can't remember why we, I have no clue, remember why we signed it at that price. Go ahead, John, wanted to say something.
Well, this is located in a town of Sebastopol, I would think they should probably have a say in this, because it could be a taxable property if it was sold, or am I wrong?
I don't think, they could have a say in it, but it's up to this board right here.
Correct.
I mean...
The town of Sebastopol hasn't had a chance to express their opinion, have they?
The town of Sebastopol was provided the same notice we were on December 19th, and I certainly have not heard from them. I know that Linda, the town clerk, forwarded this on to Jill, I believe, because she wasn't sure whether we had got it, but we haven't had any specific comment from the town of Sebastopol, whether they would be inclined to go along with the county's exercise of its options or not, so. It's not legally required, but if politically it's something that you think is necessary, that's certainly an inquiry we could make, but I think the decision that needs to be made today so that we can timely exercise the option is either to exercise the option or not.
What, okay, let me ask you this, is there's no allocated funds for it? Would it not take two-thirds of a vote of this body sooner or later?
Correct.
To come up with the funds? And you couldn't do that today, huh?
You couldn't do that today, but what you can do is give them notice of the right to exercise the option, and advise you another 30 days to actually close. And if the Finance Committee and County Board at the February 24th meeting decided not to appropriate or transfer the non-budgeted funds for this purpose, then the 30 days would expire, and we wouldn't close on the property, so.
Susan?
And we wouldn't be in bad faith for having said we want to buy it and then not do it?
No, what you're doing is saying the, we are giving them notice to exercise the option, that's step one, that step two is actually closing and paying the cash within 30 days of giving the notice of intent to exercise the option.
So if we went that route, we would in effect be tabling or postponing it till the February County Board meeting?
No, you would actually be exercising the option and then necessarily bringing the matter back in February to determine how you're going to fund the option.
But if we don't fund it, then it's dead, so it's like postponing it.
Yeah, you would, it would, it would, the property, the, the closing would not take place within the 30-day period, and the option would lapse, so.
Anybody got any questions? Right now, the motion on the floor is to turn the option down, so, and just a simple majority?
Yeah, majority vote of a quorum, so you just need the majority of the people that are here. are here.
So, a positive, a majority yes vote denies the option. Means we're not going to take the option.
Right, which is eight.
And if the, there was an intention to exercise the option, then the resolution would have to be amended.
You'd have to turn it down, right?
And that would take eight to pass.
So, would the amendment have to come before the vote to turn it down, or after the vote is taken to turn it down?
Either.
Well, then I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to exercise the option.
Okay. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, what they're doing is, in line 26, they're removing the word declines, and he's making a motion to add a different word?
Just hereby exercises.
Technically, yes.
Does that qualify matters here?
Way to look, Susan.
Well, what you would want to do, and I'm just talking about line 26, there's other amendments, is after the word supervisor, insert does, hereby and redact declines to, so it would read that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby exercise Door County's option to purchase the subject property. I think you would also have to go and probably make sense to delete lines 21 through 23, because the recommendation of the property committee is, would not then be being followed.
Grant?
Yeah.
You would also have to change lines 31 and 32, right?
Correct. You'd have to get rid of the word "to" in line 31, so it would read that the Door County clerk is directed to transmit a copy of this resolution along with a transmittal letter to Door County Child Care Services, Inc., notifying it of Door County's intention to exercise its option to purchase the subject property.
Okay, now, I don't know if I have to rephrase my question, but I'll ask it one more time. Technically, the way the motion was on the floor before, a yes vote would have turned it down completely, and you say we couldn't postpone it or table it, because it has to be a decision by the 20th of, pardon, but by putting this word in and passing it, it technically delays our decision until the next county board meeting?
No, you actually, it's complicated, but I think for the record, you are exercising your option to purchase, and then what it, what is put forward to the next county board meeting is the manner in which or how the option will be funded to make sure that we can close on the purchase of the real estate within the 30-day window that is triggered by us giving the owner notice that we're going to exercise the option.
And if we turn down the funding, then we turn it down, right?
Then we don't meet the second requirement to close within the 30-day window.
Susan.
So, can you elaborate on what happens? We decide we're going to exercise this option. Grant talks about an inspection. What other kind of due diligence has to happen, so that when this is voted on for financing or not financing, we really know whether this is a sound decision?
I think you have to assume that for purposes of today's discussion, there will be no due diligence, because they're not under an obligation to allow us, in the property, to inspect it, but we can always ask. And that will be part of the discussion going forward with the financing.
Grant, could you extend that offer a little longer out, that from 30 to 60 to 90 days? Is that possible? If you, I can just imagine the movie The Money Pit, where you buy something, you don't know what you're getting.
Right. And that's a danger with an option to purchase like this, is you may not know, and we could always ask whether the current owner would extend it out, but if they say no, and you don't make the definite decision today to exercise the option, then absent a special county board meeting, the option would lapse. And I'm just speaking from a common sense standpoint, put yourself in the shoes of a current owner. You have a piece of property that we all are fairly certain is worth probably significantly more than $38,000. Why on earth would I cooperate with you at all? So, you know, we can ask, but my guess is that we're, there's not going to be much cooperation on the other side, because we talked about no harm, but the reality is the current owner will get $38,000 for real property improvements that is probably worth significantly more than that if they sold on the open market. So, I won't use it harm. It was a deal that was struck in 1985, and we are perfectly within our legal rights to exercise the option, so. But the outcome of it is, they will likely get less money for the property than if they went to an open market sale. But that's a deal that was cut in 1985, when we sold them the property for $35,000.
David.
The comment I'd like to make is that I see this as being a county board at the time that sold a piece of property at greatly undervalued, and wanted the county board at the future date to have the opportunity to regain the property at a reasonable return. I have no problems with saying to purchase the property, to exercise the option, and then go through the 30 days to try to figure out how we're going to accomplish paying it. At that time, we can decide again to decide whether or not we're actually going to purchase the property. We don't fund it, we can't exercise it, it just gives us an additional 30 days to look at it.
Biz? I think what every county board member in this room has to say to yourself is, what are we going to do with the property? We don't, if we don't have a use for it, you're going to have maintenance department cut the grass, plow the snow, maintenance on the building if it's leaking, and taking care of it. And I'm sure Wayne with his crew have enough to do with other properties that we have. And if we don't have a use for it, I just can't see pursuing it, because we already have a property that we're renting out, that we're, property committee is trying to figure out a good use for it, and it's right in town here, good location. This is, you know, running out in the country to maintain this property and keep it up, if somebody can come up and say, well, it'd be a good idea to buy this property or exercise this option, because maybe we're going to have a real good use for it, is one thing. But we, at this point, we don't see a good use for it, so.
Kathy?
Dan? I think that by doing the option, or accepting the option to purchase, it gives us time. In this situation, you had seven members of the county board that had time to discuss it. This has just been kind of dropped on us.
That's not true, that's not true. Five members, because two were absent.
Well, excuse me. Five members.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't see anything wrong with giving us more time. I don't know what to do with the property right now, but maybe next week, you might think of something.
Go ahead, David.
One more comment, though, is everybody says we might be looking at a leaky roof, a building that's badly tore down. It was a daycare center. To some degree, they have to follow some regulations that control what the building is. So hopefully, it shouldn't be in too bad a shape, and they really shouldn't have a big issue with us sending in somebody to review the property. I know they don't have to, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Along David's point is, they were in operation through December 23rd, 2014, so it's not like it's a building that was sitting empty for years. And again, I just want to stress, exercising the option to purchase is step one, and then getting the funding of the option price within the 30-day window from the date we give notice of our intent to exercise the option is step two, and that can take place at February's finance committee and then February's county board. Because certainly, I won't give notice in, to Door County Child Care until we've had, we have enough time to bridge that gap. We're not obligated to give it within 60 days, and that should be part of the motion, is that we aren't officially going to give our notice until we absolutely have to.
So, is that something that somebody, you're implying somebody should be?
Yes.
Amending their amendment?
Mm-hmm.
John, you wanted to talk.
Yeah, I have to agree with Mr. Verley on this. I don't believe it's the county's function to take taxpayer dollars and buy property just to flip it. If we had a purpose that was stated earlier throughout the year, for the past couple of years, that that would be used for something, something that needed to be seriously looked at, then I might change my mind. At the property committee, we said no, because we weren't in the business of flipping properties for the purpose of making money. And I don't believe that that is our function, no matter how you want to look at it. It is an option by the deed and the contracts that they're obligated to tell us. I agree with that. But as far as buying it for the sake of trying to flip it, I just don't see that.
We've already made the point that that is not the case.
Then you're going to have another property to maintain, if you're going to keep.
Right, if you're. That property was owned.
Wait, go ahead, John. John's got the.
Go ahead.
Yeah, made the point that it's not the case, but what are we going to do with it then?
We don't know, but remember, and I asked that prior when we started the conversation, that property was owned by the county.
And they sold it. And they sold it.
Yeah, with, and got the, got the clause in there to get it back. So the county in 84 must have felt it was worthwhile having, they just probably, whatever. But, you know, we owned it before, we're just, we're just getting it back. And I know there are members on this board that always feel it's good to have that extra property.
And I want to go back on what I said, attorneys can't count. Today's 26th, the county board meeting is scheduled for February 24th, so if we give notice effective today, we're fine, because we can certainly, you know, issue a check within the two days after the county board meeting and meet that 30 days, so I'm not concerned about it.
Dick Kane's first, you have a.
I was just going to say, I'm sure the sellers hope that we don't exercise the option, okay?
Okay.
They hope that we won't, but I think we should just vote on it and be done with it. It's no big deal if we get it, if we don't get it, you know, so.
Joe?
Well, that was my comment. I mean, at the end of the day, we're buying ourselves 30 times to reevaluate whether or not it has a beneficial use to the county or not. 30 days from now, our next county board, this body could deem that, you know what, it doesn't have a use, case closed, move on, they sell it. Plain and simple.
That's what I meant, but.
But you're buying 30 days.
You're buying 30 days by doing it this way, right? That's what I kept saying.
But you're exercising your option. But to be very clear on the record, we're exercising the option, but then we, the next step is, we have to close within 30 days, and we could make the decision not to fund it within that time period, and then the option would disappear.
So we're buying 30 days of time.
Exactly.
That's what I want. Okay, go ahead, David.
Do we have to exercise the option today, or can we exercise the option on the last day of the 60 days, which gives us that additional 30-day window?
Well, I think it's, I thought about that because of my prior comments, and I think if it was ever challenged, it would be thinly veiled delay. The county board can only act by passing, adopting a resolution, enacting an ordinance, and once we adopt the resolution, we're in effect exercising the option. I think the 26th gives us sufficient time, because certainly, the finance committee, it's a relatively modest sum of money, we're not going to go out and borrow for $38,000. It's going to be a matter of what account to transfer it from, and if the county board goes along on the 24th, we can have a check to the sellers that afternoon. So it's, I think we're fine, and I'd be concerned that we would be artificially delaying our exercise the option if we did it to a date to make sure that we got the full 59 days. And we don't need the time.
David?
I guess I just want to point out to John and to Biz, that the finance committee routinely takes property and flips it. We do it several times a year, through tax deed sales or tax sales. And so, the finance committee does in fact take property and turns around and sells it, so, for profit usually.
Biz?
Well, that was my comment, that was my next comment. Chairman Osted, over the last several years, and some, maybe some others, led the charge to have Jayson bring excess properties that the county had, all over in different towns, forward to accept bids so that we could get it back on the tax roll. That properties we had no use for, it's maybe we got it for back taxes or for whatever reason, and did a good job, and got a lot of this property back on the tax roll. We just went through that over the last several years. And, yeah, David's right, if you want to buy this and try later to sell it, but I just don't think that that's our role to do stuff like that. The properties that we did sell, we maybe had no choice. We got them because of default taxes and stuff, you know, we didn't go out and buy them, hold them for a number of years, and then try to sell them and make money. But we did put properties back on the tax roll here in the last, probably, what, three years, four years?
Anybody else? Okay.
One more comment, if I can. I see this happen too often with the change of boards. Some reason, the board at that time saw fit to add this agreement on the sale of a piece of property for the future board to make a decision on, and I don't think we've spent enough time on this piece of property. I think the 30 days as well were spent just to see whether or not it's truly, for some reason, the county board at that time felt it was necessary to have that requirement in there, and that's a bizarre request, and in that dollar value on top of it.
It was a very intelligent county board at that time.
Well, there's not many of them left on this board, is there?
Really intelligent finance chair, right?
Two of them are dead, and the other guy can't remember.
Yeah, exactly. It gives us that opportunity to honor an intent that might have existed back then.
So, Grant, do you want to repeat for Jill?
I'm not sure what they want.
What's the, what's the motion? The motion was made by Ken and seconded by David, I think.
Just to exercise the option to purchase. Do they want to amend the wording as well?
It was to amend, it was to amend the wording in the resolution.
Oh, is that how it was?
Yes.
I must have missed all of them.
And if we are to amend, amend the resolution, what I would suggest is to strike lines 21 through 23 of the resolution, and then on line 26 of the resolution, following the word supervisor, insert the word "does." And in that same line, strike the word, words declines to, so it reads supervisor does hereby exercise Door County's option to purchase the property. And finally, on line 32, strike the word "not."
Okay. She's got that. Okay. Now, do we pick a motion on the, make a motion on the amendment, and then have to make a motion on the?
On the amended.
So it'll be two votes if the first vote, or there'll be two votes no matter what? Everybody clear?
So what are we voting on right now?
The amendment.
We're voting on the amendment that he just explained. I'll go over real quickly, delete line 21, 22, and 23. On 25, insert the word "thus," "does" rather. And line 26, eliminate declines. And on line 32, eliminate the word "not."
Actually, line 26, declines to.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the intent is that we opt, exercise the option.
Correct.
This verbiage change will convert it to an exercising.
And we take a vote on the amendment, and then the motion on the, in the bottom line, if they were both passed, that we exercise the option, and from what I understand, 30 days from now, we can opt out of it, no problem, if we want to.
Voter board?
Voter board, definitely. And it takes eight yeses or eight no's to kill it. Go to the voter board.
He's not ready.
This will be an interesting vote.
They're doing, going to exercise it. It's. Mr. Lino.
I'm trying.
Oh.
Jumped a person.
Drum roll.
Here we go, here we go.
That has passed 11 yes, and four no, and six absent. So now, a motion to pass the resolution, amended resolution.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by, seconded by David.
Me.
Lino. To pass resolution 201513 as amended. Okay, is there any questions before we go to voter board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just going to add something that if, if we wouldn't exercise this, you know, there could be some liability issues that could be against the county. In other words, if we're going to do it, we do it, right? We aren't going to change your mind, you know, because otherwise, wouldn't you think there could be some liability against the county if we don't exercise the option?
Well, the way the option is phrased, there's two parts to it. Again, we give them notice of the, that we're going to exercise the option, and then once we do that, the second step would be to come up with the funding to pay the option price within 30 days. So, I think if we follow that strictly, the risk of liability is very low. So, I think if we follow that strictly, the risk of liability is very low. That exercising the option just lets them know we intend to exercise it, and then the next step we have to take is to appropriate funds within that 30-day window to get the closing accomplished within the timeframe that's allowed by the option. And we either do or we don't, and I'm fine, fine with doing it that way.
I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to go with this, we should do it, right?
Well, that's a decision that'll be at the next county board whether we fund it or not.
We would look bad.
That'll be the argument down the road.
Look bad as a county board for one thing. You know, and so, anyway, let's go.
Okay. Go to the voter board and voter yes or no. Go ahead, Biz.
Well, just one more comment. If this passes, then you keep in mind, if they let us go in the property, like Grant said, obviously, you're going to need money to hire an inspector to go in there and look the whole thing over so we know what we're getting into. And the other thing is, is if the thing goes through, maintenance department's got another piece of property to take care of.
And we got to insure it, pay the utilities.
Insurance and, yeah, well, everything involved.
Correct. Go ahead, John.
Could you explain the yes and no vote again before we vote?
The voter yes would be to approve the, picking up the option, basically.
A yes is approving the option.
Option, yes. And a no would be to decline it. And then, from what I understand, at the next county board meeting, we will have a chance to either fund it or not fund it. And they could, and that'll take two-thirds vote.
Next thing.
That'll be correct.
Well, it depends how we decide to finance it, yeah. One would imagine would take a two-thirds vote, but...
Everybody clear? Go to the voter board, yes or no?
That means next week, next month, mine's the one, right? I guess. Come on.
That passed 11 to four, six absent. Okay, moving on. We done with the no ordinances or special reports? Is there any oral committee reports? Is there any, anybody have any questions on minutes? Anybody got any questions on the vouchers, claims, and bills? And the next, nobody talking, so, next county board meeting, February 24th at 10:00 a.m. And I got a note here, just to remind everybody, the October county board is probably going to be changed, even though that's far out. There's a couple of people that criticized me for, that they weren't noticed and they had airplane tickets bought and that, but the October county board meeting maybe will be changed because I understand that the towns have a meeting at the same time at the Calahari. And that involves about six members of the county board that might be going. Am I correct on that?
Unlikely.
But I'm just warning everybody, make your tickets changeable in October.
You fly to the Calahari?
You never know.
Who's got a plane all the way?
On the county jet.
Yeah.
On the county jet.
You never know.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.